We finished off with the introductions and we were just reviewing and adopting the agenda.
Okay.
So I'd like to go ahead and turn that over. And she just read all the information on the agendas to be approved.
Well, thank you so much, you guys, and I'm so sorry I was late. I honestly, I don't know what happened. I woke up as I usually do with getting ready. The only difference this morning was there was a huge cat brawl behind my house. There's a feral cat that has been coming around and our other cats have been territorial. So I know I went out there and I was like trying to chase them all away. And that's the only thing that happened different. And all of a sudden it threw me behind 20 minutes. So my apologies, committee members for being late here this morning. So the agenda has been read into the record. We are now at motion and a second for the agenda, committee members?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Delegate Nathan Nota, can I get a second?
Go ahead and say.
Second made by Delegate Arvin Mitchell. So committee members, are there any questions, any comments or any amendments that need to be made to the agenda at this time?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Sorry, does anybody else have anything? I have, I think there's nine legislations here. And this is to allow the Department of Corrections to submit leases for proposals to the US Department of the Interior. And these are for.
The 105L?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to get a recommendation, can we do this in terms of a consent? Sharon is on her way over to give an explanation of what this entails. She's going to be the representative here, but she is on her way. Dr. Gray Eyes apparently is at a graduation in Colorado somewhere. So. It will be the process, can I put this on consent agenda?
You can make that request, but you'd have to read out which legislations you want added to the consent agenda.
Okay. I would like to do a consent agenda, Madam Chair. This is a motion. Legislations A, which is 007025. Legislation B, 0071-25. Legislation C, 0072-25. Legislation D, 0073-25. Legislation E, 0074-25. Legislation F, 0075-25. Legislation G, 0076-25. Legislation H, 0077-25. Legislation I, 0080-25. And those would be the legislative items I'd like to put on the consent agenda this morning.
Thank you for that, Delegate Nathan Nota. Amendment number one is a motion made by Vice Chair Nathan Nota to do a consent agenda for items under seven, new business, A all the way to I, which is every single legislation that is on the agenda at this time. Committee members, can I get a second? Second made by Delegate Herman Daniels. For the record, what I will do is I will have Lorraine read those legislations titles into the record. Have these legislations been read into the record? Okay, so if you could just state that they've been read into the record and just read the titles and the legislation and then we'll go ahead and we will proceed forward to a vote. But before Lorraine does that, committee members, are there any questions, Delegate Mitchell?
I was hoping to be one of the agents who could do a question, question that I have. I know that the way I understand the 501L is that everything has to be built by your own fund. And some of these that are on the list was built by I R R. So I hate to move it up to Nobby and that question comes up and. And. I hate to be, I hate for them to say LLC, you can do it. And the other, my other question would have been to the sponsors, did it go through the 164B? What was the recommendations?
So with a consent agenda, there's no questions to the legislations. So are you requesting then that we not have a consent agenda, Delegate Mitchell?
No, we'll just go ahead, but those would be some things that I'll be thinking about.
So I'll just tell you Delegate Mitchell, so we had a meeting about three years ago on the 105L. So for the ARA, they allowed it. And I know that Dolores Gray Eyes did ask that specific question. Usually federal funds, we can't use those and enter into the 105L. But there was a provision within ARA that basically if they gave that money to the tribe, then it becomes the tribe's money and they can spend it any way that they want. So it's like ERBA. So they gave that money to the tribe. So we can then use it for whatever projects we want and that's how we can enter into the 105L. But if let's say Congress did a discretionary, you know, like fund for this project and then they have it built, that's where we can't use the 105L. And then the same thing with some of the loan programs, those are not, those are not technically, because we kind of get a break from the federal government on those, those are not qualified for 105L. It's really kind of frustrating, that's why I was bringing that up in DC. Can we get clarification, just a clear cut rule on how or whether we can apply for 105L using certain federal fundings? Okay, all right. So any, any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Okay, so this is amendment number one made by Vice Chair Nathan Nota, second by Delegate Herman Daniels. Lorraine, can you go ahead and read the titles into the record, please?
Madam Chair, I'm remembering the wrong order, committee members. Legislation number 0070-25, an action relating to law order. Committee and Navi Committee authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the US Department of Interior for the Crown Point Navajo Police Investigations Building Number 7298B sponsored by Honorable Nathan Nota. B, Legislation Number 0071-35, an action relating to law order. Committee and Navi committees authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the US Department of Interior to be channeled. District Law Enforcement Building Number 7985C sponsored by Honorable Nathan Nota. B, Legislation Number 00725, an action relating to law order. Committee and Navi committees authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the US Department of Interior for the PFF District Police slash Investigations. Building Number F87309 sponsored by Honorable Nathan Nota. E, Legislation Number 0073-35, an action relating to law order. Committee and Navi committees authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the US Department of Interior for the Tuba City Corrections Investigations Building Number 7173B sponsored by Honorable Nathan Nota. E, Legislation Number 0074-35, an action relating to law order. Committee and Navi committees authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the Department of the Interior for the KFF District Adult Corrections Building Number 149 sponsored by Honorable Nathan Nota. F, Legislation Number 00505, an action relating to law order. Committee and Navi committees authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the US Department of the Interior for the Tuba District Adult Corrections Building Number B sponsored by Honorable Nathan Nota. B, Legislation Number 0076-25, an action relating to law order. Navi committees authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the US Department of Interior. Interior for the Crown Point Adult Corrections Building Number 7289H sponsored by Honorable Nathan Nota. Legislation Number 0077-25, an action relating to law order. And Navi committees authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the US Department of the Interior for the Crown Point Juvenile Corrections Building Number 7289B sponsored by Honorable Nathan Nota. I, Legislation Number 0080-25, an action relating to law order. Committee and Navi committees authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the US Department of the Interior for the Crown Point Juvenile Corrections Building Number 7289B sponsored by Honorable Nathan Nota. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Lorraine. So with that, committee members, amendment one made by Vice Chair Nathan Nota was to create a consent agenda for all of the legislations on the agenda. All of those legislations are being sponsored by Delegate Nathan Nota. All of the legislations say the same thing and it's to enter into the 105L for the building specified for the particular legislation. Second was made by Delegate Herman Daniels. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the amendment before we go to vote? Delegate Daniels?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the legislation. Letter I, Legislation 0077-25 and letter P and I, Legislation 0080-25. Do you read the heading? They're full of the same guy. What was that? Is it the same, the same legislation?
Good point. Thank you for catching that, Delegate Daniels. H and I, Crown Point Juvenile Correction Building Number 7289B. That's for Legislation 0077-25. Legislation Number 0080-25 is for Crown Point Juvenile Correction Building Number 7289B. Vice Chair Nathan Nota?
There are two different buildings. One is, one is listed as just B. I don't know why the maps aren't in here, but 7289 is a separate building.
But they have both 7289.
Oh.
Lorraine?
That's an error, I think.
Going to the legislation for 0077, yes. In the Crown Point Juvenile, let's see, number B, 7289B. And then going to 0080. That one, it's an error, typo. So that one's supposed to be for Tuba City Adult Corrections Building Number B.
So the typo is in the agenda.
Yeah.
Lorraine, I need you to be better. So 007725, committee members, that is for Crown Point Juvenile Corrections Building Number D, Number 7289B, so that is correct. The incorrect one is letter I, Legislation Number 0080-25. That should actually be Tuba City Adult Correction Building. So. I don't know. What we can do is if we can remove the motion for the consent agenda, Delegate, Vice Chair Nota, Delegate Daniels, and if we can do a motion to correct the agenda for I, Legislation Number 0080-25, and have it say the Tuba City Adult Correction Building Number B. Because we have to make this correction first before we actually do a consent agenda on what's listed on the agenda. So Vice Chair, do you mind if you remove your motion?
That'll be fine.
Delegate Daniels, can I remove your second? Okay, so let's, let's do this first. Let's go ahead and make a motion, second, to correct the item on the legislation first. So I need a motion for that amendment.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to correct an error in Legislation I, Number 0080-25, and change that from the Department of the Interior for the Crown Point Juvenile Corrections Building Number 7289B, which the correct Legislation B should be for the Tuba City Adult Corrections Building Number B.
Okay, for the record, Vice Chair Nathan Nota has made an amendment to correct the agenda that we are currently, that's currently sitting before us. So the motion has been made, can I get a second?
Second.
Second made by Delegate Arvin Mitchell. Again, for the record, the agenda states Legislation Number 0080-25 in action relating to the Law Order Committee and Navi Kitikat Committees authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the US Department of Interior for the Crown Point Juvenile Corrections Building Number 7289B. Sponsor, Honorable Nathan Nota. The correction shall read Legislation Number 0080-25 in action relating to the Law Order Committee and Navi Kitikat Committee authorizing the Navajo Nation Department of Corrections to submit a lease proposal to the US Department of the Interior for the Tuba City Adult Correction Building Number B. Motion has been made by Vice Chair Nathan Nota, second by Delegate Arvin Mitchell. Committee members, are there any questions or any comments to this amendment? Okay, not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. We will go ahead and proceed forward to a vote and this is for amendment number one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for amendment number one. Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr., how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Honorable Herman and Daniels votes in favor. Honorable Nathan Nota?
I vote green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes green. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
Vote green.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, we have three in favor, zero opposed, with one not voting, chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you, three in favors, zero opposed, two not voting. One being myself as chair and the other one being Delegate Stephen Arvizo, who is excused today. So committee members, we, I know we were entertaining an amendment from Vice Chair. So Vice Chair, if you want to make that same motion for amendment number two, we are now open to that amendment.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion, Madam Chair, as amendment number two, to put nine items, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I on a consent agenda for this morning's meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chair Nathan Nota. Can we get a second for a consent agenda? Delegate Herman Daniels, committee members, are there any other questions or comments at this time? Not seeing any hands going up, not hearing anything. Let's go ahead and proceed forward to a roll call vote to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for consent agenda. Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr.?
I vote green.
Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Nathan Nota?
Green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes green. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
Vote green.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, we have three in favor, zero opposed, but two not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Lori. Three in favor, two zero opposed, two not voting. One be the chair, one be excused. Delegate Stephen Arvizo, amendment number two passes, committee members. We are now back to the main motion. Main motion was made by Delegate, or Vice Chair Nathan Nota, second by Delegate Arvin Mitchell. Are there any further amendments that need to be made at this time, committee members? Okay, not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. Let's go ahead and proceed forward to a roll call vote to accept the agenda with two amendments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for main motion. Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr.?
I vote green.
Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Nathan Nota?
I vote green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes green. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
I vote green.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, we have three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting, with chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, three in favors, zero opposed, two not voting. Thank you, Lori, for assisting us. We now move forward to item number four on the agenda, review and adopt the journals. There are two journals that are listed at this time, April 28, 2025 and May 5, 2025. Lori, can you tell us when these journals were sent to us via email?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. Two journals were sent out by myself, Lori Caldwell. First one on April 28, 2025, on Monday, May 12, 2025, at 1:14 PM. Journal number two was sent out May 5, 2025, on Wednesday, May 14, 2025, at 4:52 PM. Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Committee members, Lori did email the April 28, 2025 journal on June, I'm sorry, April 28, 2025, at 1:14 PM. And the second journal dated May 5, 2025, on May 5, 2025, at 4:52 PM. Committee members, we can handle this one of two ways. We can accept each of the journals separately with one motion, one second, one vote. Or we can accept both journals with one motion, one second, and one vote. How would the committee like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to combine the two.
Okay.
I did read the, the one that was emailed out.
Thank you for that, Delegate Arvin Mitchell. Delegate Arvin Mitchell makes the motion to accept April 28, 2025 and May 5, 2025 journals. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Nathan Nota. Committee members, are there any questions or any comments regarding the journal?
No, nothing.
Not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. Lori, can you assist us with roll call vote to accept the two journals?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote to accept two journals combined. Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr.?
I vote green.
Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Nathan Nota?
I vote green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes green. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
I vote green.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, we have three in favor, zero opposed, but two not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Lori. Three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting. The April 28 and May 5, 2025 journals are hereby accepted. We now move forward to item number five, receiving reports. We have none, old business, we have none, new business, item number seven. We are at the consent agenda. The Legislation Number 0070-25, Legislation Number 0071-25, Legislation Number 0072-25, Legislation Number 0073-25, Legislation Number 0074-25, Legislation Number 0075-25, Legislation Number 0076-25, Legislation Number 0077-25, and Legislation Number 0080-25, with the correction being that 0080-25 is for the Tuba City Adult Correction Building. Committee members, we do need a two-thirds vote on this consent agenda. So if we could go ahead and proceed forward to a vote for the consent agenda of all the legislations that have been read for the record. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Motion made by Vice Chair Nathan Nota, can I get a second?
Also.
Seconds made by Delegate Arvin Mitchell. Let's go ahead and proceed forward to a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for consent agenda. Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr.?
I vote green.
Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Nathan Nota?
Green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes green. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
I vote green.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, we have three, zero opposed, but two not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Lori. Three in favors, zero opposed, two not voting. All of the legislations that were sponsored by Vice Chair Nathan Nota hereby passes and moves on to Navi Kitikat Committee. Thank you, Delegate Nota. Committee members, we are now at item number eight, close of meeting. Before we call for a motion and a second for adjournment, are there any announcements? Okay, not hearing anything. Just a reminder, in terms of our next LOC meeting, we do have our LOC leadership meeting. Upon conclusion of today's meeting, we will go into executive session. Tomorrow, we do have a LOC leadership meeting regarding the 638 contract funds that we started the process on, but we need to start getting a better picture of what we're going to be looking at in terms of the budget and then the federal budget is also coming up as well. Memorial Day is on May 26, May 28 is our next Law and Order Committee meeting, that's a special meeting. And then on May 28 at 1 o'clock, we do have a leadership meeting that will be scheduled. And that one is for, what was that one for, Lorraine? The May 28?
Thirty-six hour.
Thirty-six hour hold, that's right. Then we have, then we go into June 9, at 9 o'clock AM, we have a, it says 9 o'clock AM, Lorraine, for the regular meeting. Why don't we change that to 9 o'clock AM or is that a typo?
For the, oh yeah, the chambers, or do you remember the resolution?
Oh, for the chief justice, okay. And then June 16, we will be at the Navajo Mountain Chapter House at Navajo Mountain, Utah. Delegate Daniels, that's when we scheduled that meeting with Navajo Mountain. Lorraine is going to be working with him to let them know that we'll be out there for LOC meetings. Perfect. June 23, we have an LOC meeting, regular meeting. And then we have several oversight budget hearing meetings, June 17, 18, and then the 20th, because the 19th is Juneteenth and then Navajo Nation is off during that time. Now I think our staff will be happy if we called them in on their day off. Right, ladies? Ann McCarlo? Okay, then we have June 14, we have, I'm sorry, July 14, we have the regular Law and Order Committee meeting. And then July 21 is the first day of summer session. So we're going to have to probably push that meeting into August or schedule another time. Then we have July 28 for the LOC conference, I'm sorry, the LOC regular meeting. Those are my announcements. At this time, committee members, are there any questions or any further announcements that need to be made? Okay, not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. We will now go ahead and now I'm open to hearing a motion and a second for adjournment.
Motion to.
Motion made by Delegate Arvin Mitchell, can I get a second?
Second.
Second made by Delegate Herman Daniels. I don't think there's any questions or any debate on adjournment. So Lori, can you please assist us with adjournment, with vote?
This is roll call vote for adjournment. Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr.?
I vote green.
Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Nathan Nota?
Green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes green. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
I vote green.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, we have three in favor, zero opposed, but two not voting, including chair, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting. We are now at adjournment. I thank you, committee members, adjournment at 10:50. So we can go ahead and we can go into executive session at 11 o'clock. Committee members, do we have Espino?
We have Carolyn Weiss on the call. I don't see Michelle Espino on the line.
Okay. Carolyn, are you the one who's going to be assisting us with the executive session meeting today?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, Caroline, so I'm going to go ahead and excuse the staff at this time. So it'll just be LOC members and yourself who will be present for the meeting.
Madam Chair, I think there will be another line instead of.
All due to set up an executive session and transfer the person over.
You can transfer it to me.
You can transfer to me. Check. Before we take off, I just wanna get the LOC webpage confirmed by everyone here. It's ready to go live. I just need to update the photos, but that's about it. I have your information right here, just talking about the LOC livestream, the agenda, the calendar for LOC. And then just talking more about what LOC does, what's the, um, uh, the rules go in LOC. And then, of course, we have all the legislations here. Coming all the way down. This is all for today, too. It's all updated. I made sure the last one was correct, too, Tubus City, so that one's correct. And it comes all the way down, then it's the, um, media party.
Okay.
If it looks good, I can make it live today.
It looks good, make it live.
And then we just wanna get your approval for the quote.